Snoop Dogg and our drone program is possible because she believes in our vision of integrating technology into those trade technology programs. Our students are coming away from our program with just one course, one class. That's it to get the part 107 license, a federal license. And they're going out and making between 45 and 55 dollars an hour with no job experience. There's a map behind you too that shows the national average for drone and geospatial scientists. The average salary is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. When you hear that, it sounds like a very abstract number. We have four students that just graduated from our program that are currently working for a company called Firefly out in Auburn Hills. They are making over ninety thousand dollars a year as their first job with an associate's So part of that, you're thinking, why do we have dog drones? Why don't we just have the flying drones? There's a number of different ways we get to use them, working with students with disabilities, with special needs. But it also helps us eliminate barriers too. We can have professionals that have mobility limitations, that have cognitive limitations, that may even have spatial limitations. You can be sitting in an office here in Lansing and piloting a drone out in the state of Oregon or in Washington State. We have students that are at work right now in Auburn Hills doing exactly that. Snoop Dogg is a great example too of the way we are taking this technology and inspiring the next generation. We got this dog drone because it started with a conversation between our faculty about flamethrowers of all things to give our director of risk management more things to be worried about. But then we started looking into it. We found out the Department of Natural Resources here in the state uses this exact dog drone in front of you. It's kind of cuddly with his tie-dyed collar, Snoop Dogg. They're using this exact drone to do controlled burns in the state to help prevent natural disasters. Unlike a person, it's a whole lot easier to send a $2,800 drone into an active situation where there's a lot of danger involved because we can repair them. It's a whole lot easier to replace a drone than it is a person. All of this started with a conversation. One of our high school students in our RISA program came up with the idea of calling him Snoop Dogg because it sounded like a good name. Well, he does have a name. It does stand for something. He is our security network and operations observational platform and drone-oriented geospatial guardian. That's the name we came up with. One of our students reached out to Snoop Dogg's PR agent a few months ago, told him about all the things that we were doing in our program, the things that you are helping us do every day in our programs, said, we'd like to use your name on our dog drone if it's okay with you. Back in August, Snoop Dogg was here up in Mount Pleasant, and about August 11 through August 12, he came by West Campus, walked in through unannounced without having any prior engagement or us asking him to come. He came on his own toward the campus, looked to see what we were doing, and sent us a letter telling us that he was excited that we were using his likeness and having this kind of technology for our students. So again, as we're talking about dog drones, it sounds like a toy. It's not. We're making an impact on our community. We are training the next generation of drone professionals. We are in demand in the state, and these are the kinds of programs that you're helping to support. So thank you very much.
Um, trustee, trustee Proctor.
Sir, before you leave, um, I'd like for you to help me communicate with the University of Michigan. So recently I was in an airport, sitting and engaged in a conversation with a lady across the table from me, and she talked about U of M's drone program. I suspect it's second rate to what we do, but I'd like to let her know that. So I may have to call.
Absolutely. Thank you. Well, I'll be more than happy to be an ambassador for that. We like talking about our programs.
Before you leave, you've answered all the questions because I was going to ask who's controlling that dog? And you are.
That would be.
So how many of these drone dogs do we have right now? We have one? How so? How many are we expected to have and in what timeframe?
We already have a number of different flying drones between DJI and a couple of others that we have our students build. Our students are actually in class right now building our next set of them as part of the course. We are the only academic institution in the state of Michigan that has a dog drone at all of that particular model.
Okay. Okay, hold on. This one. So are we going to get some more of those?
We're working.
Okay. You just keep them right out there, okay? Right out there. Trustee LaBelle.
No, I'm sorry. So say it again. What are the Snoop do? You said control burns. Not quite sure what is a control burn, but if you can kind of go into what are he does because he's so cute. I absolutely like that.
So controlled burns is when we're burning underbrush in forests and in natural regions to help prevent larger wildfires from happening. It's a controlled burn.
Okay.
Um, it also helps prevent other disasters from happening from wildlife and our forest regions. We have very large forests here in Michigan. Um, so it also helps us remotely sense those regions without inputting a person into that environment. It helps conservation. That's just one part of it. We also teach students how to use a number of different drones to do anything from construction to survey to first response and cinematography. Perfect example. First responders are now starting to use drones here in Lansing. So if you notice on some of the buildings around here, there's about three of them now that have these gray boxes sitting on them. There are drones in them. It's so that our police force is able to instantly launch a drone. Like when we have the U of M games and MSU games, when our traffic is backed up, it's going to take a while to get a squad car down somewhere. We can instantly deploy a drone and go and observe whatever that's whatever's going on in that situation. So that's just one of the things we can do. There's it's hard to write a comprehensive list of all the things we can use our drones for because the limit is creativity. One of our LCC police officers who's at West Campus is part of our program, got his part 107, and now he's taking that and going out and working in commercial real estate while also working for us. You can do both jobs because of what you learn.
I got a couple more questions about Snoop. You say that the students are building Snoop?
They're not building Snoop specifically. They're building other flying drones as well. So when I say we have the only comprehensive drone education program, we are the only program, including U of M, that doesn't have it, a drone pilot, building and maintenance and geospatial science program. Meaning our students are doing everything from building and maintaining to flying and operating to using them to create autonomous systems for everything from public works, cinematography, and all the other impressions we've been talking about.
So how are we reaching um our how are we reaching the K-12 um schools with this particular this dynamic programs? Because as you said, you know, they are, you know, sitting and playing video games and whatnot, and this could probably probably be very, um, you know, instrumental for them and very exciting. So have you started reaching out to the K-12 schools?
We have, and it's why I've walked plenty of miles in the last month and a half too. Um, just a few weeks ago, we were at Trends, which is a conference with a number of community colleges in the state of Michigan, talking with other CIT programs about their drone programs that they're starting and they're reaching out with K through 12, but they have that they've had struggles that we haven't had. We thankfully have partnerships with RISAs in the area too. We have our CC RISA program with Clinton County. Uh, we are working to establish those programs that help that don't exist yet. We are working with a program that has not had that traditional K through 12 outreach. So we're starting it by getting the word out there that one, we exist, and two, this is a viable career that you can go into. This is something that does pay very well.
Trustee Taylor.
Question very basic. Thank you for the presentation because I've been looking forward to this presentation seriously, and it's cool. Um, but okay, so this is very basic, but okay, so does it have eyes? Because I noticed it was a lot. I mean, does it? How does it know what it's looking at and all that? And then for those who actually need a support dog, um, is or do they program it to their needs to walk a certain way? You know what I mean? Like, how does how does that look?
That's a wonderful question. And again, it's why it makes sense for our CIT and drone programs to be at Tech Careers because we use different sensing or different suites of sensors that we can attach and change on all of our drones. So Snoop Dogg is sitting in the back right now. He's a little camera shy because he already walked on back there. Um, the spinning bit on the front of his face is Lidar. He's creating a 3D map, which we already created in this entire room before I had this presentation for him to be able to walk around and not bump into anybody or bump into any um desks or what have you. But he's also using visual recognition. We are programming him with a watered-down version of artificial intelligence that allows him to recognize people and say hello or recognize when somebody's not supposed to be there. Um, so that's a it's not a basic question at all. It's a very it's an easy question with a not-so-easy answer. We can attach any kind of sensor to any of our drones that we would like. I have one in my pocket right here, actually. We have a partnership with a company called Radiacode. Radiacode creates sensors for radiation sensing. We can create geospatial maps to see is there high radiation in an area? Is there low radiation? Is there particles in the air we need to be worried about? And it's a whole lot easier to send in a drone, something that's irreplaceable as opposed to irreplaceable individual. And somebody can be sitting in an office here in Lansing, looking at a nuclear power plant on the other side of the state or on the other side of the country and getting that data. Machines are a lot easier to to calibrate than people are, depending on if you're like me, an educator, and I don't have my coffee first thing in the morning. Snoop Dogg is pretty consistent every single day.
Uh, trustee Proctor.
Sir, are we looking at monetizing this development at LCC?
Not quite yet. We are more interested in training the next generation of students, the first generation of students, to be able to use these technologies and to know what's out there that they can go into with them rather than us trying to monetize it. We want to get out there as an exceptional program, not just the cheapest cost line. We just have to be both.
Thank you.
Last question, maybe. You said you have four students that just graduated. Is that correct? Past or something like that? Was it four?
Four students who graduated that currently have a job at the same company. We've had a total in the entire program's history about 42 students graduating.
Okay. So how many students does the program hold? Like spots?
So we have a maximum seat capacity for our drone flight course at about 16 students per course.
And it's probably always always full?
It is. The registration has been open for, I believe, two, just about two months now, and it is it's fully booked. So we are at capacity for that program.
Awesome. Wonderful. Great.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful. That's great.
That's the end of the president's report, Chairman.
Thank you. Um, and and I just want to say that I've always been in favor of this report because it tells us so much that's going on at the school and our impressions and what we're doing in the community and engagements. And so just encourage my colleagues to, you know, take a look at that when it's when it's sent or even some past ones. Uh, moving on to consent agenda action items. Are there any items here? We only have a couple that uh my colleagues would like to remove. Let me session. All right. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items? A, board of trustee employees, number one and two. B, cooperative purchase, number one. Thank you, trustee Thomas. Thank you, trustee Taylor. It has been moved by trustee Thomas, second by trustee Taylor, to approve the consent agenda action items as you see them. A, board of trustees employees, one and two. B, cooperative purchases, one, campus-wide moving services. Is there discussion? Discussion? Hearing unseen, Ms. Duncan, would you take the role?
Ms. Shonda Thomas, Chatham Taylor.
Hi.
Terrence Frazier.
Yes.
Hope LaBelle.
Hi.
Noel Garcia.
Hi.
Robert Proctor.
Angela Matthews.
Yes.
Osha Kiri.
Thank you. Moving on to trustee-generated idea, the idea of a $700,000 book stipend for students. Uh, trustees, if you look in your packet, um, page 31 in your board packet, the president did allude to it. And so let me preface this conversation. At the September regular board, um, trustees meeting, the board voted to approve the administration to research what the ask of $700,000 book stipend would look like, whether what is the best advantages or the pathway to spend this amount for our students. Dr. Robinson and I were in constant contact over this 60-day process, and I posed very specific questions to elicit a robust research and best options for the spend. Remember, I did say in the September meeting that the book stipend could look different than the initial ask. I am very much aware of my colleagues' interest and possible concerns regarding my request. I want to publicly thank Dr. Robinson and the administration for hearing my heart in this matter, thus have compiled three detailed options for the board to review with data collection, history of previous TGIs, requested amounts, action taken, and funding source of the ideas. Please know the TGI is not a haphazard proposal to find a way to spend college dollars or present a way, I'm sorry, to present a struggle to administration to find a definitive outlet justifying the initial ask, whether it is an honest thought and heart to search for a beneficial pathway that makes sense, it breaks down barriers for our students, and it makes, excuse me, it makes sure resources are available to help without enabling. Everything has increased across the economic spectrum. Give you an example, a dozen of eggs back in 2017, and I reference 2017 because that's when a trustee-generated idea for a book stipend was introduced. You have that in your packet. Cost around $1.47. To people, you know, now is spending $2.42 or kind of upwards of $5.26 or more. Whole milk, for example, a gallon costs $3.23 in 2017, and today the cost ranges somewhere between $4, $3, $4, and upward $5 and so on, depending on the location. The bottom line, cost is rising in every facet of our lives, which compels the request of the $700,000. And according to economic experts, rising costs will continue. Therefore, as an educational institution, how can or will we help our students obtain their goal of receiving an education while minimizing legally a way to help them? I believe this TGI can have a beneficial line of help. As I said in your board packet, starting on page 31, you will find the detailed write-up of the TGI. With the forthcoming discussion or the conversation, it will consist of two parts. First part, questions by the board to the administration or myself regarding the TGI. The second part, action regarding the TGI. So at this particular point, I'm going to open this moment up for any questions that I'm sure my colleagues have. Dr. Uh, trustee Proctor.
Madam Chair, I apologize, but I'm not sure you accurately reflected the history of this notion of a trustee-generated idea. The initial request, I'm going to strike the term request, idea, was about looking at cost of textbooks because one of the trustees on this board was taking a class at LC at the time, LCC at the time, and I believe one of his children were also a student. So he floated the idea of how is it that we might be able to reduce that expense? I remember being an undergraduate and books were really expensive. I probably ought to apologize to Professor Samuelson and McConnell. I was an econ major at one time. I believe their econ books were used almost 90% of the institutions that taught economics. And there might have been minor updates from year to year, but they were getting quite wealthy with these textbooks, and they were quite expensive. So back to the trustee who asked about the cost. One of the faculty members responded, talking about OER, something that he indicated. Faculty members at LCC were already engaged in exploration, uh, trying to reduce the cost of educational materials. So it didn't start out as a stipend for anything. It was about what ideas are there for reducing the cost of educational materials for our students? And ultimately, uh, what was developed was a funding proposal to encourage faculty members to engage in OER research in their respective classes so that it would lessen the cost of students attending.
Great. Yep, that is the um, that's the history. And I just want to um, and and as I stated, and thank you so much for that because um, history is very important. Uh, and as I stated, that this could look different. It could morph into something, something else. And I and I do remember stating that, and maybe my word of of stipend might not have been the correct word to say because I think, you know, getting stuck on that word. And I'm hoping that uh we can move beyond that word and definitely concentrate on what the administration has put together, which is very comprehensive. Thank you so much, administration and Dr. Robinson. It's very detailed. It talks about the three options, and then it also talk about um where the funding would come from. Expanded, option one is expand the library textbook lending program. Option number two is college and food pantry. We already have that on our campus. We know food insecurity is a hot topic across the nation. It's not new, but it has um elevated some because of what has trickled down from Washington with the SNAP benefits, which is impacting everybody. And then also um expand our land laptop lending program. We do already lend out laptops, um, and the administration has definitely delved into this. I think that idea opened this up for the conversation and for us to take a look at it to see the best uh option to help our students in this particular, I would say it's a crisis time because of everything that's happening from top on down to the local and the city levels. So and then we talked about it, food insecurities at ACCT, it was a hot topic there about, you know, students struggling with what's happening now on the national level. So I open, boys open, I'm saying, trustee Taylor, then back to trustee. Oh, you want to go, trustee Proctor? Trustee Taylor, then trustee.
Given the actions.
Okay. Um, so thank you. I did all the administration um doing the research and coming up with, I mean, this was very detailed. So so thank you so much. And um also, I can, I sense, and I want to acknowledge the passion that Chair Matthews had for our um for our students when it comes to addressing those barriers. And I I don't know if y'all remember, but in our last meeting, I um brought up, um, at the ACCT conference, we went to a financial wellness um session, well, I did, um, because again, we all split up and go to wherever we wanted to. But in that class, um, they talked significantly about student barriers, how this is a need, and also they gave statistics through surveys. And Dr. Robinson and I chatted just a bit, you know, after that session, just because it it kind of hit me a little bit when I saw those numbers. I'm like, wow, from the survey. And they used, I think, Trillist Strategies, what we talked about. And um, and just a couple of numbers just to throw out there about the significance of what Chair Matthews just stated and what our economic times are right now. Um, it said 89%, I was thrown back actually at this, but 89% of students, and this was at a different college, obviously, that was running the session, um, use credit cards to pay for basic needs, but also to pay for food. Okay? Then it also said 46% of students reported housing insecurity. So this is a need. I looked at the this um proposal in detail, and um I'll say option one for me. It just, I'm not seeing the alignment with the amount that's being asked for. Um, option three, the laptops, um, when I when I kind of did the math, um, if we're asking for 300 more laptops, for me, even if we go to the top-of-the-line MacBooks, um, it still wouldn't average to me that the ask that we're asking for. But option two, which was the um, the uh food pantry, we have one and we're expanding it. There is definitely a need for that. And so I I'm excited for that one just because I know there's a need. I'm interested to see what all that entails, um, looking at this. I I'd kind of wish we would have had a deeper market analysis just because based on our um student demographic and population. So I kind of did my own briefly just so I can understand where the ask of a dollar amount. Um, but really, and this is, and I sourced some stuff from college and university Food Bank Alliance. They said typically, food insecurity rates among college students range from 40%, 20 to 40%. So if we look at our college population, that's around, what, 2,000, 3,000 students? That's that's pretty big, you know? So so when I looked at that, I did some, I ran some of the numbers, and some of those numbers, I mean, looking at, I mean, obviously, it'd be space improvement or we don't, I don't know what square footage we're looking at. But um just different things like staffing, for instance, right? That was actually stated in here. I'm hoping we can do volunteer. That's just me. But um, but then recurring food and stuff, we know that that's going to have to take place, obviously, if this is going to be ongoing. My point is, it is a, it is an absolute need. But when I did my own real brief analysis, because again, that's just something I chose to do, the dollar amount I really came up with was around, I'll be honest, the $200,000 range. But that's not to say this amount couldn't work. My ask, or I guess what I'd like to see, and I guess ask my colleagues, is if we could consider a phased approach um for a pantry around, like allocating $250,000, just to take it up a notch from from our balance sheet, um, because budget's already done, right, for 2026? So and then that gives us a chance to get this detailed market analysis, but then also it gives us a chance to reach out to maybe food banks and fundraising ideas, stuff like that. And then the rest of the funds, we can consider for our 2027 budget.
Trustee Proctor.
I sure would start. Um, I read the review by the administration very carefully, and I want to thank you for all the work you put into it. Let me start just going back to the initial concept, and that was about a book cycle. And you calculated it might get distributed equally across our 11,000 students, amount of $64 a student. I have no idea what the cost of books are, and I didn't see that kind of analysis in the report. So to what extent does that really help students? How is it that we identify who's in need of that kind of additional support? It's not there. As I said earlier, I was an econ major at one time. It's the study of the allocation of scarce resources across competing ends, other things being equal, or caterers parents. Nothing's ever equal. So I recently at the ACCT, I was on panel, and I asked what we ought to think about as trustees. What good are we attempting to achieve for whose benefit and at what cost? And cost doesn't have to be monetary. There's a range of things. So $700,000, we could allocate that amongst a number of things that students struggle with. We've got a fund balance that's much beyond that. So far, do we want to dig into the fund balance to help students? So it's not just a simple calculation of $700,000 across 11 students. It's what's the maximum benefit we can get out of whatever dollars amount we allocate to help students stay in school or get here to start?
Um, let me just first say thank you for the report. I was, um, it was very thoughtful. And, um, Chair Matthews, I hear you as it relates to filling a sense of, of need. Um, and, and Trusty Proctor, I, I hear you as well. Um, I read the report and I thought about it, and I, and I also thought about the decision that is before us. Um, one, is it to spend or to not to spend? And if we are to spend, then to choose one of these three options. And I have to say, given the information that is before me, I really don't feel like we have enough information. Um, they're, they're really, I, I, you know, and I would love to, you know, if we have our, I think Don is available online?
Don is online, yes.
Okay. Um, I would, I would love to hear some feedback from our CFO, and then as relates to the three programs that are cited here, uh, maybe if those individuals are, are present, if they could kind of talk about, you know, what they're seeing within their programs, because I, I just honestly would say, I would feel uncomfortable trying to play any, many, miney-mo. Um, who, who gets it or who doesn't, and do we do it now? Um, I, I do recognize, and looking at our financials, that we're, we're three months in, and this is, um, I mean, this is still a, a sizable spin. And so I, I think that we need to give some credence, even if seven-hundred-thousand is the right number. Uh, you know, I was looking at our, our net income, I think it was something like one-point-seven, and so, you know, we're asking for a sizable spin, and we're only, you know, a third of the way through our, our fiscal year end. And I would, I would hate for us to make a decision that would financially constrain us, um, if something else should come up in the remaining nine months of our fiscal year. And so with that, I guess I would ask if, starting with our CFO, if he could speak to, um, the financial impact.
Chair Matthews, thank you to Trustee Lavell. If I could make a, uh, kind of a framing comment, uh, and then invite Don, who is in front of his camera remote. Yes, please, yes. This one, okay, good. So just a bit of a framing comment, uh, about the administration's, uh, preparedness to answer questions, two parts, I heard, uh, Chair Matthews from Trustee Lavell in particular. Um, Don is prepared to talk about the financial component of this, and was part of the team that put together the report, and, uh, probably the primary architect of the four different ways, uh, that, that a TGI like this might be funded, and, and I'd like him to speak to that in a second. As regards the three options, what I would like to say, and I wanna thank the folks who worked on this over the weekend and in the past sixty days, um, the folks who are over the operational areas of all three of these choices, having to do with the library and textbooks, having to do with the food pantry, and having to do with the laptop lending program are also here and have, in anticipation of trustee questions, brought some information. If I could, Chair Matthews, and this is what she and I have talked about, it might be more efficient for them to respond to questions rather than to make a presentation about each one. Uh, that was kind of the intention of the report, was to lay choices at the, on the table. And if there are specific, uh, questions about those, those leaders know, uh, they knew to be prepared to answer questions. So if that's all right, uh, Chair Matthews, maybe we could have, uh, Don talk about those four, uh, and then, and then I would, my request would be, if there are specific questions about the options, trustees could direct them, and we'll get the right person to the podium to answer them, if that works. All right, so, and Don, are you, are you ready to talk a little bit about, um, the financial component of the report and the four, and, and the, and the funding?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Robinson, uh, trustee, members of the board. Uh, when one looks at financial options, there are many things to consider. Um, and again, it's been mentioned earlier about certain background. Uh, LCC has been very, very cognizant of cost to students. In the last five years, two of those five years, there was no tuition increase. When the college, uh, went with an online bookstore for our students, because the college did not have a bookstore, the college took no commission on the sales of those books. Normally that runs probably in the range of seven percent, and so we just told, uh, Barnes and Noble to pass those savings on to the college, I mean, excuse me, to the students. So, um, as far as the number, uh, I agree, there's no right number at this point in time that, uh, one would necessarily gravitate towards. The annual budget, uh, has a one percent contingency in it. You account for the possibility of certain things that are unplanned. So that's one thing that, uh, can be considered, is to authorize the administration to, uh, in essence, spend X amount of that contingency, which is, excuse me, about one-point-five-million dollars. Currently, uh, from a financial standpoint, due to, uh, increases in enrollment for fall and what looks like to be the same situation for spring, um, we are doing well from that standpoint. When we have an increase in enrollment over what we've budgeted, as Trusty Proctor mentioned about economics, our marginal revenue is greater than our original expenses. And so that's always a good thing for the college. So those are some positive facts in terms of, you know, where the college is right now, you know, roughly, uh, four months into, uh, the fiscal year. As I said, one thing that the board could do is, is to authorize a transfer into a board designated fund for a specific purpose or purposes, uh, and how to, uh, give the administration broad direction on how that money should be spent. Question comes from that, then, is sustainability. Is this gonna be considered as a, uh, a one-shot effort? Or has been mentioned already, uh, do we do something now, and then we know building the 2027 budget, that we're, we are gonna put in X, whatever X might be, into the budget process for the new year? Several years ago, uh, the administration requested a technology fee to charge students, which is one-dollar-a-billion-hour. Several of the components of, of what has been responded here would fall into that category, definitely expansion of laptops, and also, since many library resources are now digital, uh, it could conceivably also be used, uh, for that. As also mentioned previously, staffing, uh, concerns have to be, uh, looked at in terms of, in order to implement any one or more of these, uh, options, what it would cost from a, a staffing standpoint. Uh, and also, from the standpoint of any facilities and equipment necessary to, uh, execute any one of the, of the options. So, you know, that, I, again, the college is, has been very, very cognizant of supporting students. Last fiscal year, one-point-seven percent of the college's budget was spent on scholarships to students, either for tuition and fees or for childcare. Given, uh, knowing what some other colleges do, that's a pretty substantial, uh, commitment to make to, to students with institutional funds. So, I think that, you know, the big question is, how much? Is this a priority that is, as I said, a, a one-time thing? Is it something that's, is gonna be done in addition to what's already being planned in this year's budget? Or is it something that's going to, in essence, compete with, uh, existing priorities? Those are all the, the main points that I think have to be, have to be considered. You know, if we look at the fact that we have a hundred and forty-five, roughly, uh, million-dollar budget, um, you know, put the amount of seven-hundred-thousand dollars, say, in, in perspective to, uh, to that, or that we're looking at for the current fiscal year. I hope I've addressed your questions, but I'd be happy to respond to any additional ones.
All right, my, um, my, uh, like everyone says, a great report. My question is more for whoever's doing the laptop lending program, I have questions for that, uh, particular person. Um, first is, how are we gonna sustain that? Um, and then also, what is the method or thought process on new technology coming out? Uh, cause I, I'm not looking at it just as a laptop rental, but technology rental. We have Snoop Dogg here, you know, how do we have Snoop Dogg, you know, loaned out to our students or to our chair? Period measures.
Chair Matthews, if I could. I, I don't anticipate a Snoop Dogg lending program in the future. But, uh, if we could, as these questions come up, I think what I'll do is recognize the most senior leader who has that area in their portfolio. And I know a lot of the people even closer to the work are, are here. I know the train will go through, but why don't I start with Dr. Samuel? If you could, uh, get the right person to talk about textbook lending, I know who it is.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Robinson. And I do have to turn it over to Dr. Welch, because laptop lending is part of our library. I can give you some general facts, but I don't wanna steal their thunder, so.
I was narrowly thinking about computers.
So, thank you for the opportunity to talk. I'm gonna ask the director of the library to come up to the podium and answer your questions. He does both the textbook scan, the laptop lending program in the library, and he can answer both at the best.
Perfect. Hello, um, my name is John Siligie, as Provost Welch said. All right, um, my name is John Siligie, as Provost Welch said, I am the director of the library, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have about, um, laptop lending or, uh, textbook lending.
Um, my question is about the, the laptop lending program. So what's the, what's the plan, if we're able to do that for sustainability, uh, with new technology coming out, um, beyond loan-out laptops? You know, just the software, the, the AI that's here, that students are gonna need to be, you know, equipped to be a student at any university or college?
Yeah, um, thank you for that question. Um, an important thing about the laptop lending program is it has always been a great partnership between, um, the library and the IT department. And so when it comes to, um, the purchasing of laptops or, um, getting new laptops to add to their collection when others become too old, um, we have used the student tech fee, uh, that CFO Will Stee, uh, just mentioned, and, um, that has been the way that we have updated, uh, the computers. And our colleagues in the ITS department, um, have a schedule that they, uh, use to know when our laptops are getting outdated and when they need to update them. And they have done great work as well, um, helping make sure that our collection in the library is always updated. Um, this also, you know, kind of goes to your question about, uh, what software is important. Um, that is, um, also something that IT has been very diligent about as well. So I wanted to, you know, really thank the IT department for their partnership to keep this up to date in that regard. Um, one other thing that is not specifically in this proposal, but I think might help answer your question as well, is the library recently also started a library of things program, where we do check out other technology and materials, um, to students as well. So that is another area that we have, uh, worked to expand, and that was actually our Star Day of Giving project last year. Um, so we will be able to use those funds to ex, expand, uh, the library of things as well.
That's called the library of things?
Yes, it's the library of things. Uh, what kind of things? Uh, right now, um, we have, um, uh, Raspberry Pis, so small computers that students can check out. Uh, we also have student wellness things such as, um, a sun lamp, uh, for students who may, you know, get, um, seasonal depression this time of year. So, um, we try, we've tried very hard to balance it between kind of academic things and things for student wellness.
Trusty Garcia, then trusty Lavell.
So, um, I have kind of an interesting personal situation. I've got eighteen-year-old twin boys, well, actually nineteen today, they're both, and, um, one of them's, uh, a freshman at Michigan State University, we won't talk about those fees. Um, the other one is attending LCC, and I was a little surprised to see twelve credit, uh, for classes, and the tuition was free. And so the only, um, fee that we had was for one textbook, it was eighty-two dollars. I was happy to pay that, after what I'm paying for my son at MSU. Um, I, I, I can't imagine that's just one textbook in four classes. Don't we already offer some, uh, free online textbooks for our students in their classes?
If you're okay, I'll answer that, cause that's not in the library, it's in the Center for Teaching Excellence, and that's part of the OER program. So we actually have three different versions of textbooks for students. They can purchase a physical copy of a textbook through Barnes and Noble, they can do first-day inclusive access, which is an electronic textbook that come, shows up when they register for classes. It sometimes comes with the code that will also good, online homework system. And then we have OERs, which are the free textbooks. We have, um, fair amount of the OERs, um, not for every single section, so your son may have OERs for three of his classes and then textbook for the fourth.
So there is, um, financial assistance there for our students that, that they might not even know they're getting, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, good job. Can you talk about, uh, unmet need, especially around, I guess, both of the, the programs that you oversee? So the laptop lending, are there students coming in and, you know, laptop, you know, how does that look? And for the library, any unmet need that you see there as well?
So yes, uh, there is some, um, especially at West Campus right now. We recently expanded our laptop lending to West Campus as well, so students at West Campus can check them out. Um, right now, we have one hundred laptops that are available for lending at West Campus. Um, there is a waitlist on that, uh, at West Campus, at downtown campus, where we have one thousand laptops, there is not a big waitlist right now. So, um, the need right now is more at West Campus. Um, as part of that, though, expanding to another campus, we would, um, like additional staffing money, because expanding that program at another campus will require staffing time as well.
Trusty Tom, then trusty Taylor.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, we used to send our used laptops to the state of Michigan. Do we still do that, or where do they go now?
I cannot speak to that, because, uh, the library's role kind of ends when we send them back to IT with surplus, so, um, I'd be happy to talk with them, or if you feel as comfortable speaking to that now.
I think, um, thank you for the question. I think our purchasing department works to auction those off when we're no longer using them, but we're not necessarily going to the state Michigan for everything that we are letting go of.
Um, my second comment is, I know that we are doing the in-person, um, comments and, numbers, but I would like to see a broken down, I mean, the analysis on paper too, if possible, if that's not asking too much, um, because I'm looking at all three of them, and it almost seems like it's a possibility that we could aim at all three possibly, but I would like to. In front of me too, so.
But I, I guess I would wanna know what you mean by it. What would you like to see in front of? What would you like to see in front of?
So like, for instance, he mentioned a waitlist at West Campus. You know, like, like some information around, well, how many folks are on the waitlist at West Campus would be helpful.
Right now, there is 11.
There's 11, okay, thank you, perfect. Thank you.
I'm thinking that it's probably a market analysis like stated before that breaks down just, you know, those based on our student population. And, and in this case, I'm not referring to, I know you're up here for the laptops, but I'm referring back to that food pantry. But, um, just a market analysis, a breakdown of how that could look and the cost, estimated cost. But my question for you, and then I think I have one for Don. Um, so again, back to the money, right? So the 700,000, do you have? I don't know if this is a question for you, but like, a cost of how much 300 additional laptops? Like what brand are we using? Are we doing, you know what I mean? Like just, just, what does that look like?
So the cost for a, uh, a laptop here is, um, $1,260. We, I will, um, defer to Dr. Samuel or, um, someone in IT for the model that we have. It escapes me right now, I'm sorry. But it's $1,260 is the, uh, cost for each laptop. So that times 300 would give us a strong estimate of, let me check my notes here. I might have that written down.
So as John is checking his notes, I just want to make sure the unit cost is $1,145, but we do get a warranty on there. So that's about $71. So the total cost is $1,216, so very close to $1,216. The model is the HP Tobuk 440 G11 right now. But we do, every three years, our laptops are cycled and we get whatever the best thing is for that point of time. And we also make sure that whatever software needs to be on there is on there. So when those laptops are returned, our IT department works at the library. They reimage everything and make sure that students are getting a fresh, a refreshed laptop, if that makes sense.
So I did calculation, um, and at $1,216 times 300, that is, uh, $364,800.
64, what was that?
364, uh, eight, $364,800.
That, I guess, just to my second, uh, question, only because again, the ask for these three is 700,000. So I'm just trying to get to, um, I guess this question is more for Don, I don't know if he's still on. But so I, I know I brought up earlier the 250,000 being more of like, and this is for the food pantry, kind of like a, just an initial start. And the reason I say that is because again, the need is there. We don't want to hold off. I mean, we've all talked about what's going on with today and our students. And, and again, this was another college that had these numbers. So can you imagine what our LCC students are possibly going through? And so my question is, if, if we start this off in a phase of 250,000 due to the fact that it is, is something that I think is immediate that we need to probably do? Could we then get, I don't know, administration to, you know, look at other measures to, to fund the remainder? Or something like that? Like, does it have to, I guess, I can't see him, but come, does it have to come from our? And I get 700,000 compared to, to the actual budget that we work with. I get that it's a small fraction, right? We get that, but we don't have to use it just because it's there if we have other measures that we can possibly use to fund some of this. So is that a possibility instead of us, you know? And then if we did have to use it from all of our, you know, commit 700,000 from our actual balance sheet, then what bucket would that come from? Which, um, I, I struggle with committing that amount, that full amount upfront because we have to give room for, what if we didn't need it to guys do, you know, so.
So let me, let me ask for clarity. Are you speaking from the laptop standpoint? Or are you speaking from the food pantry? Okay.
Yep.
Cause he's, he stands up here with regards to laptop.
Yep.
And so.
This is for Donald, Don, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
If.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
If I could, Chair Matthews, like, would you like me to see if Don, uh?
I think Don is.
Yeah, yes. If I could set you up, Don, I think that's the way you structured the, the financial part of the report. And maybe you could add some detail to trustee Taylor's question.
Sure. Uh, you know, as far as the, uh, the food pantry operation is concerned, there is no existing revenue stream that one could point to. It's our property taxes, our state appropriation and pushing fees from, from students. So in one way or another, it would be coming out of the general fund, either as additional expenses right in the, the general fund or the board authorized in a specific amount to transfer to a more designated fund of X amount. And then in terms of future years, uh, that could be built into, uh, the budget process.
So I saw some information about, and, and first, this would not be something, um, in going back to what the administration put together with regards to how to do this. Um, it wouldn't be a thought just to dump $700,000 and then just, you know, take off and go. I do believe that from what I'm looking at, it talks about providing items that are not currently available. Also, um, seeking or exploring long-term sustainability models, improving infrastructure, staffing requirements and, you know, some support from the foundation. But the, and I'm reading right from this, initial investments would focus on immediate impact through expanded inventory and reassessability. And we go down and it just talks about what the use of it would be. And I think, Don, that would be spreaded if something like this happened, um, spread it out and not only, it's not immediate, but years to come, you build this in so that it is beneficial just across the board with regards to helping students. As opposed to $700,000, we're going to get all these canned goods and we're going to get all this? No, that's not the way that it's structured. It's structured to be an implementation process, probably phased in, is that about correct?
Yeah, that would be correct for me from a financial standpoint is to, uh, begin the process, uh, now and then build a, a longer term plan to make it sustainable.
Something like this, hmm, if you had to put a year, add years to it, what could something like this, the, the sustainability of this kind of an ask would be? 10 years, 12 years, 14 years? Anybody had answered?
I'd have to defer to the experts, uh, in student affairs on this with the provost.
Food pantry, I can have Dean Miller come up and talk a little bit about it, but it would have to be a phased approach. There's an immediate need to, for the food pantry that we have now to serve the students that need the food. Then we would have to work, we're already working on some partnerships with Greater Lansing Food, the food bank. And the other one is the shout out, swipe out, um, partnership and figuring out a physical location. That would not be immediate, that would be, it took me a year warning, oh, led for, from there, sorry. Anything?
So do you have any specific questions? I mean, obviously we would have an expansion. It wouldn't be like, so, uh, just like a dump and we're done. But we would want to look at how we could expand our current offering and look at the infrastructure as well as staffing.
Okay, so would that look like, say, for instance, currently the food pantry is open how many days out of the week?
So, um, it's open five days a week at every campus except the downtown campus. We are open only one day.
Okay, so with this particular, um, financial support, then that would allow the downtown campus to be open how many days?
We could possibly expand it to five days, but part of our issue is staffing. Cause we utilize volunteers at the moment.
Okay, and with utilizing the volunteers, that's kind of not a.
It's not sustainable because there are employees that have full-time jobs. So we're pulling them from their jobs to run the pantry.
Okay, and so if that would happen, then you would need how many people to run this operation?
If we were going to expand the downtown offerings, we would probably, we could start with one person that could be in charge of all five days.
How was the operation?
Um, well, currently we do 11:30 to 1:30. We try to catch students, um, during the time of day when people are hungry and, and changing courses and, and moving from building to building. At the other campuses, it is throughout the day. So we would have to identify a time that we could hold hours where students would have access to it. Now, if we had a dedicated staff, we could do eight to five or nine to four or whatever. Or even, we would like to look at doing some evening hours as well.
I'm going on a limb, but I'm out here now, so. There are distribution centers around the city. Would that be, or could there be conversations for LCC to, with this particular operation, to become a distribution center, so to speak, where the community could, um, and access the food pantry?
I have had conversations with a representative from the food bank and that was, one of the options is to make LCC our downtown campus a distribution center. We would have to be open to the community in order to do that. In the model in which we discussed, our problem would be our locked doors for our community members. So we would have to figure out a way, if we were going to have community participation, how we would allow community members in. Any questions?
Sure. Might be an impossible question. To what extent has LCC attempted to identify the efficacy of any of the programs we have with regard to helping students persist and be retained?
Under this question, we don't track student names, particularly in the food pantry for dignity purposes. And then, uh, the director of the library could talk about it a little bit better than I could, but library collection policies don't, um, allow us or recommend that we track students, what they take from the library. So we cannot do what you're asking, I understand, but we can't.
I think I understand that. I thought I read in here, but I may be mistaken. In one of the institutions that's referenced, talked about the changes in student outcomes by implementing some programs to help where there was a identifiable need.
Some of those programs, if they work with like a food bank, they capture names and they record names. And then they also associate, like, I know the food bank uses poundage. So, you know, um, Patrick came in and had, you know, 10 pounds of food. And that's how they can, um, track that data. We do not take names. We don't even, you know, if a student comes every day at one of our other locations, that's not a problem. It's not an issue.
But not just food needs, but the laptops or any other materials that might help the student, again, get here, stay here and complete.
So to kind of speak to that, um, as, as Provost Welch said, we do not keep a record tied to any student for anything they check out from the library because, um, it is very important to us to preserve privacy of, in the end, um, make sure that it's anonymous. So no one can ask us for like, oh, here's the, you know, give me a list of books so and so checked out or any materials, whether they're laptops. So, um, for that, we don't track that type of information.
Uh, trustee Tom.
Hi, could you tell me how many we serve in the pantry? Do we know that, uh, like within the week?
Oh, um, so just to give you an idea, last year we served, or we had, um, 4,681 visits. And that's across all of our campus locations. So far, as of last week, we had 1,666 visits and we still have four more weeks to go. So we are on track to, um, uh, have more participation, more visits this year than we did last year at the same time. And on average, on the downtown campus, we have roughly 35 students on a Monday within two hours.
The 24, 25 academic years of last year, we have, yeah.
Sorry, if you can, I wrote that down. So for 2024, 25, that was, uh, say July of last year through June or whatever, this year, we serve 4,681 students. Okay, and so then year to date for this fiscal year?
So far, we've had 1,666 students. And that count starts in August when the semester begins.
When I said June, sorry. I'm July. I said end of June, I meant July, thank you.
I was with you.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could, Chair Matthews, my colleagues who have, who are work, looking from their work papers to answer your questions, we're very happy to get those numbers to you. They've been working for the last week or so preparing for anticipated questions. But with all this information we could get, get, get to the board.
Is Don still on the line?
Yes, I am.
If that's providing items not, um, available. So can you speak to the items that are available? That is a clear question.
Okay, so we offer, um, microwaveable meals like Hormel meals, uh, the small individual cans of soup that you can microwave. We have proof cups, granola bars, um, we have a lot of ramen bowls, different types. We have vegan items, vegetarian, gluten-free. So when, uh, when it lists that we'd like to expand it, we'd like to expand it to more, uh, sustainable meals. So canned goods, box pasta, things like that. So right now, it's more like they're coming in and they can grab, um, a Hormel meal, some chips, maybe proof cup. There are several other items, but we would like to provide more sustainable food, not just snack type foods. There's foods that would just be immediate, would address an immediate need.
So in this, um, So in this, um, in this particular scenario, what's the question? What about refrigeration and, you know, things of that nature?
We don't have that.
Is that something that you, that was thought about? Is that on a wish list?
Yes, and shelving.
Okay, so then I would lend to more healthier meals because of refrigeration, so on and so forth. And that was the, that would be in the kind of infrastructure part?
Yes.
So, Don, talk about, if you can, and this is a great robust discussion because, you know, people have concerns. And I do want to, and I do want, and I don't, I don't take no offense to any question that's coming because I knew it was coming because I know my colleagues. So individually and collectively. So with that being said, I anticipated, you know, a robust discussion. Don, what would a, there's an immediate. I see in here it says something can be done immediately with, you know, this particular amount. What is that that can be done immediately? And then what would be phased in?
Excellent question. Again, I haven't had detailed talks with staff and student affairs and the provost in terms of, they would have to say how they want to phase it in, and then we can cost it out. But then you have to basically get down into the details in terms of what you want to do, when, what's the timeline? So there's not, at this point in time, I really can't say a specific number. But one could be developed by having those internal discussions.
Dean Miller, if you could have an immediate in addition to what you already have now for students, what the canned goods, what else would you desire?
In addition to?
Yeah, an immediate, talking to you.
Well, I think until we have like refrigeration and dedicated space shelving, I wouldn't go down a path of like, I want rice, I want canned soup. Those would be great, but I think we have to look at what we can currently offer and expand those offerings. And the one thing I failed to mention at the very beginning is that there's been a significant increase in the pasta food. So what we have been purchasing in the past is not the same. I mean, we just, that's part of the issue. So one thing we want to focus on is having more availability at the downtown campus in terms of day and time, but also food items as well. Okay, Dr. Proctor?
Dean Miller, you could answer part of my question.
Okay.
What portion of what we distribute is purchase versus donate?
We don't take any donations. And the reason why is because, I mean, if, not in all cases, but a lot of times if people do drives for food, we get expired cans of food, things that are past their expiration date. And so at this moment, we don't ask for donations. That doesn't mean that we can't shift to that model, but we don't have a staffing to go through everything that would be donated and discard what isn't viable.
Part of the reason I ask, I've been involved with the Mid-Michigan chapter of the American Red Cross. Once upon a time, the Mid-Michigan chapter operated the region food distribution center here in Lansing. There were only two units in the Red Cross that did that, the other was in Dayton. Much of the food that Red Cross distributed came from the grocery stores, buyers and other large outlets. And they purchased some of it, but that coming from stores was still there, dented boxes and things like that. We don't obtain anything like that in any of the grocery outlets in Lansing.
We have not received that.
Thank you.
That's an excellent question.
Trustee Thomas?
Never mind, I was going to ask about food, so.
Are there any additional questions, Tommy? Trustee Taylor?
Fair to say that we, at this point, need the detailed analysis just to get started because, like you said, we would need to know, like, as far as refrigeration, how it's going to look, and, you know, the detail of it all. But we need some kind of funding soon to kind of get started with that. But we would need to know, break them, yes.
Okay. No further questions? I do have a, yes, I'm sorry, Dr. Sam.
Thank you, Chair Matthews. So, and I appreciate all the questions. This is helpful for us to know your thoughts on different things. One thing that I want to point out from part of what Dean Miller said earlier is anything related to refrigeration, bringing in equipment to help support the pantry, that is definitely something that we're exploring. And so it's not something that we can do overnight. So I just want to make sure that I manage expectations. That's a little bit different. We'll definitely have to get some partnerships in place and make sure that we're compliant when it comes to actually storing refrigerated items. So as she mentioned in the short run, you know, what we're able to do is expand our current offerings, expand a lot of times that it's available. But that is what we can do in the immediate. The other things, it's a little bit more logistics because in one, you have to figure out, you know, where these refrigerated, I mean, refrigerators go. Is it going to be close enough to loading that so that you can load things in? They're definitely going to have to manage it, put some new material. As Dean Miller mentioned earlier. So there's a lot of other things that we have to consider. Or we can have a refrigerated store in the store that you can walk through in the shop. So I just want to make sure that you all have that information. Thank you.
That's question, I think. Oh, here it is. So when you talk about immediate, some type of immediate implementation of this, you know, we're at the last end here, about a month, and that's about a little bit over 30 days, almost 25 days, and this year is over. And so your immediate could start fall, winter, no, winter, spring, you know, with those, with the items that you're talking about that are currently not available and doing some expansion on what you have. So students coming back, you know, in the winter and the spring could possibly obtain, you know, these other items that you don't have now with, you know, with expanding. Thank you. Thank you so much, administration. Thank you, Don. Give y'all a hand, because that was a lot of information. Lots of information. Okay, here we go. That's my service. So at this particular point, but Ms. Venita, now, you know, for this clarification. So we had a discussion with regards to which one of, you know, with all of these options. And so now, as a board, then it would be making a collection as to which option. Or just going on what you want to carry. Or provide the administration what next steps. Nations, if you're not ready to vote tonight, provide those. Okay, I'm going to poll. Are you ready to vote tonight?
No.
Okay, so you're not ready to vote tonight. What are the next steps, then? Be specific with what you would like from the administration. Yes?
I have a point of order or a question, I guess. So we have the three recommendations from the administration. As a board, can we decide which one of these three recommendations we'd like the administration to look deeper into? Because they, we've asked a lot of questions for each, well, for at least two of them for sure that I really heard over and over, that we would like to get more information on what the cost would be, what the effectiveness would be. Can we at least decide as a board where to guide and point the administration versus them doing all three of these again? And just being able to think, here's what the board is leaning towards. You know, recommendation one, two, or three, or two out of the three, something like that.
Okay. So on page 41, this is where Vice Chair Frazier is coming from, with the recommendations from the options, textbook lending expansion, food pantry expansion, laptop lending expansion. And so the question is being asked for the next steps. What would we like the administration to do with regards to one of these items? Trustee Thomas?
Well, that would be hard to do without exact numbers of the need. We don't, we don't know the need. So I agree with Trustee Taylor on the market analysis. That should be the first step, so we can see clearer when we're voting.
Okay, so let me repeat. So it is being asked for the next steps of the administration to look at each one of these options and to present a market analysis to the board. Is that what you're saying? Anita?
Can I?
Yes.
I don't have any water because I believe there's actually four options. The first one is, do we spend $700,000? And if so, then how? So I guess that would be four because the first question is, do we spend yes or no? I guess as a point of ask for the administration related to a needs analysis, I would really like to see what is some guidance on the appropriateness of the $700,000 ask? You know, and looking at our financials, I'll be honest, I think it is aggressive, especially where we are in the fiscal year. So I'd really like to see some guidance on its impact or even like what the amount should be. And then here's where it could go, how we can per se allocate it. Allocate it this much to option A, this much to option B, this much to option C, based on this type of need.
Trustee Taylor?
So I, okay, so I'm just going to be, I would like for us to get a detailed market analysis for the expansion of a food pantry. And within that market analysis, I believe it will break down according to, again, our student population. It will break down the cost of different, I guess, necessities that this expansion may have. I know there's going to be a bit of a wait for refrigeration and stuff like that, but I'm talking about the main logistics. Once we get that back after we agree, in my opinion, the food pantry, that will kind of tell us that amount we're working. And again, I did a real small one, and 700,000 was, it was, to me, just, it was a, it was an ask, even though we're dealing with a small fraction compared to our $140 million budget, but making sure that we're using our funds properly and making sure that we're thinking this thing through. So again, food pantry expansion is what I want to support. And also a detailed market analysis, which will then give us that, that cost.
Madam Chair, that should be in the form of a motion. So is, Doc, you got another question?
I'm waiting for the motion.
Okay.
If you want me to weigh in. I'm starting to make the $700,000 request. So if we spend $700,000, what do we spend it on? It's going to have the biggest impact on students coming here, staying here, and completing. Is it food for those who have sheltered food insecurity? Housing hasn't been talked about. We get a few of those requests about housing. Other kinds of support. I know some institutions have these distributions for people who drive and their vehicles break down. Not being able to get the class might mean you might not be a student for very long. All kinds of things we could spend money on. It's what's going to bring the biggest bang.
Yeah, that's kind of like what, where I'm kind of spinning my head here is, you know, if I had to put a number on one, two, three, or four, how do I know that without hearing from the students? If, in my opinion, it would be hearing what I'm hearing today, food pantry on the one, laptop on the two, and pets book on the three, that I don't know that is the need of the students. Are we getting information from the students on what they're serving that's been done, are talking to our students? Certainly want to help them, you know? I'm not denying the fact that they need the help, like, just what is it for me?
Well, I think what I'm hearing is, number one, a motion on the floor as far as the $700,000 towards the expansion of the food pantry with the administration bringing back a market analysis of the need. Is that what I'm hearing?
No correction. My motion is to focus on the food pantry, bring back a detailed market analysis. 700,000 is not a part of that motion. My original ask was, my thought was the 250,000. But I understand that we need a detailed analysis before we come up with the number that my colleagues are suggesting.
Okay. So I think that there's a motion needs, should be made regarding the ask of the $700,000. And then a motion to, and help me with this, Ms. Chair, because it's a little tricky. And then a motion to approve a need analysis regarding the expansion of the food pantry? I hear two separate ideas. First is a distinct, separate motion than what the other trustees want. So they will have to make a motion on what they. Trustee Proctor?
I would flip that if that's the direction of the law. You need to know what the need analysis is first, and then identify how much you want to spend to address the need.
Okay, you're working it out, and that's fine. So a motion?
I didn't make a motion.
I'm just, I'm just working, talking this through. That's all I'm doing to make sure that it goes on the record appropriately. That is, that is what I'm doing.
For Trustee Proctor, yeah, I think you're right. We need a needs assessment to figure out what that is and then make the decision on the financials. But my question really is for us as a board, what do we want to do out of these three things, first and foremost? Do we want to look into textbooks, food pantry, or laptop? And for me, I think the laptop piece is a, is a stronger need and a longevity need that the institution can be more responsible for student success. But there's lots of different ways students are getting opportunities for students to get food and shelter within the larger community and figure out ways we can partner and bring in. within the larger community and figure out ways we can partner and bring in things here. The textbook piece, we've already heard that there's opportunities for free textbooks or low-cost textbooks. We have a, you know, eighty-two dollars per trustee, that's probably cost for his child to go to school. The laptop, lap, the laptop piece for me is a tool that is not going to go away. And the, and being able to continue to give our students the most up-to-date systems and information so they can be good students within the system, within any classes they're taking. Because I don't think anyone is not using a laptop at, at the community college, college student.
Dr.
I might find to agree with trustee Frazier. I wasn't limited that need analysis to just food. Yet again, it is what's the greatest need in our students' face that we have the capacity to address. And what if my...
Trustee LaVell? Thank you. And I love this conversation. I, I just, I would like for us to consider, Don mentioned the board-designated fund. And I, I think these are all very good conversations, and everyone kind of has a, a bit of, you know, a passion. And essentially, I believe what, you know, this has set off is in the space where us as trustees can take an area or areas that we, we have a sense of passion for, that we really want to say, you know what? Let's carve out something. And so I, I say all of this to say, I, I think that even in the needs analysis, that it would be great if the administration could, could look up, look at setting up a form of a board-designated fund and, and right sizing that for this remainder of the fiscal year, where it is not a, a financial constraint, you know, but a, a reasonable amount, where whether, you know, based on the needs analysis, is food, or laptops, or however, but in working with that fund as a board, we can then make a decision on how to allocate it and say maybe for a fiscal year, these are some, you know, a special interest of areas within the college that the board likes to focus on.
Well, let me be very transparent. Sheriff, I'm not really sure which direction to go, because I'm hearing a whole, I'm, I'm hearing different things. I'm hearing, and it's a little confusing, to be honest with you, to kind of wrap this up and then move it forward. So my question to you is, does a vote need to occur tonight? This is discussion.
It should, because there's three distinct ideas. And so one may get support, one may not. So the only way you're gonna move forward is for a person to make a motion and to get support and for the board to vote. Otherwise, I have these three ideas, and administration is lucky, not knowing which idea to go with. There's three different ideas.
Trustee Parker?
There are four. And the options recommended by the administration. There is do nothing. And then there are the options that they didn't address. So five. And, and the least.
So the initial, let me go back to the beginning. So the initial idea that came to the board was a seven hundred thousand dollar book stipend, which the administration has done the research to say, that's not the best use. One time use will only get people sixty-three, sixty-four dollars. We all know that. So they said, here you go. Here's the three options for you. One, two, or three. Which one of those do you want to vote on? So that we can move this needle forward and, and begin the process of finding out how this money will be spent, in what way this money will be spent, whether it's phases or longevity. Is that correct?
That's correct, but the board does not, you don't want to vote on those three. Only one person sounds as if they're interested, and another one is interested in the computer. So you have three, and another person's interested in that.
Needs analysis.
Or she's interested in needs analysis that doesn't need money. So those are three to me, unless you can join the motion together.
Three different...
Again.
Let me try to do a motion. I moved that the board, we, we vote on which one of the three recommendations we want to choose as a board, that the administration will move forward to go into deeper analysis again. And then we can come back another time and look at if we accept their analysis and funding. But just figuring out which one of the three, or two of the three, however many.
I'm looking at Sheriff. Is that a proper motion?
Yeah, that's his motion, absolutely.
Okay.
Just has to have support and more people that are...
Make your motion one more time, please.
I moved that we, as a board, vote on the three recommendations. One is, we'll vote on three recommendations. Which one that we want the administration to move forward with, doing a deeper analysis of it? So we can make a more informed decision.
Is there a second?
You don't understand it? Are you saying that we will vote tonight on one particular option? So that administration knows what they're working on?
Yes.
Trustee Parker?
I understand this correctly, trustee Frazier, if I had. We might have a series of votes, identify which one earns the majority of the board. So we'd start out maybe by going, by person by person, which of these three items identified, one, two, or three? And through the process of elimination, we might get to four votes.
Yes, I can work with you. Yes, sir.
So... I had my hand... I'm so frustrated. Because I would have made a motion that we do the need analysis so that we can know what the student or the numbers are saying about the students, and we won't sit here now with trying to vote on what's most important when we don't know what's most important. That's what I just said.
Madam Chair, if I may interject. Trustee Frazier's, whether he had a motion or not, he didn't get a second.
I didn't get a second, right?
Didn't have a second yet. I, 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 I support it.
Oh, let's, please, let's, let's, please. So there is a motion on the floor. Is there support?
Which?
Frazier's. Vice Chair Frazier has a motion on the floor.
I second.
It's been moved by trustee Frazier, second by trustee Taylor, that the board would vote on one of these recommendations so that the administration knows the direction to moving. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Is there discussion?
I'm sorry, I just want to get clarity, because the original said to vote on one that you wanted them to do a deeper dive analysis. That's not what you wanted, now? But that's what your original...
Yeah, when that, when we're giving them, whichever one we vote on, that's where they'll give us a deeper dive analysis. All the things that we might need to know, how much it's gonna cost, what is the need assessment, what is the success rate of these things, feature success rate.
Okay. Any discussion?
I just believe that we already, three options are already here. And they, they were put here because obviously the administration did their due diligence in researching and giving us all the things, all the stuff of it. And so I, I, I personally believe we're at the point of deciding on... What else do we want?
Dr. Proctor?
The only question is the process we're gonna use to get there.
Any further discussion?
I suggested one earlier, too.
I, I, I won't support this motion only because it's, take it two of three hours, deeper hours. I think I support Thomas's, Thomas's motion and deeper analysis, deeper analysis.
Trustee Parker?
The only motion divorced right now is stand by trustee Frazier, garner the second.
All right, so there has been a motion, there has been a second, there has been discussion. Ms. Duncan, take the role.
Ms. Lamanthys?
Of saying.
Robert Proctor?
I don't remember the order of, nine, two, or three.
No, you're not, you're not...
I'm abstaining. Well, that was a process about...
You're voting, right now you're voting if we're going to pick one. So that's a yes or no. If we, if it's a, if it cares, then we'll come back and everybody will pick one. So right now, you're voting on his process to pick one. Yes or no? That's the one.
No.
Ashana Thomas. So Terrence Frazier.
Yes.
Hope LaVell.
No.
Noel Garcia.
No.
Chadon Taylor.
Yes.
Miss Shavel.
So trustee Thomas. Let me go back to Sheriff. So at this particular point, now there's another motion, which is trustee Thomas's motion. That's on the...
She needs to stay.
Oh, oh.
Yes, ma'am. You're right.
Everybody crank.
Yeah.
Calm down. I get it.
Can you finish with two or three?
So that, that's what I was...
Yes.
Going to actually, so a motion needs to be made.
Madam Chair, I need my needs analysis. Don't have that second.
Support.
Isn't...
I need...
It's been moved by trustee Thomas. It has been supported by trustee Garcia, that a needs analysis on all three recommendations, that the administration would move forward with a need analysis on all three recommendations with regardings to the students. Any discussion on that? Trustee LaVell?
So I, I, I love the, the needs analysis piece. However, I'm gonna go back to making sure that we are prudent in, there is a lot of need, and we need to just be fiscally prudent to think about how much of that we fund this fiscal year, and we're only, you know, coming in the fourth month. So I say all of that to say, there should be some guidance around an appropriate spend that will, that, that will be prudent for the college to do. We just can't say there's a million dollars in need, let's, let's fund that. So I would just say, there needs to be guidance from the finance office around how much is feasible for us to put towards the need that has been identified.
Sorry, can I make an amendment to the motion?
Yes. If, or do, do, can I make a friendly amendment to include a fiscal review on the right amount that should be funded to meet the need? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
What was that?
Yes, speak on that.
Yes, you can.
We have in our governance policy a calendar of the activities of this board. And typically, now, Don's still there, in preparing the budget year that begins July one, we asked to get, collect all this data about the financial needs of the various operations of the college, and start to collect that by March, so that the board is in a position to vote on a budget before the end of June. So we don't have to spend the money this year. We can look at doing some of this the next fiscal year. That's what I suggest we consider, but not as part of amendment to the motion, just as you...
Okay. So there's... And I think that was very well said, which is why I believe that the, the office should look at what is prudent for us to spend this fiscal year, given to me the current need that has been discussed. So us looking at how much we'll actually be able to deploy reasonably during this year, given that we're already in the fist, in the budget. And I know in March, there'll be a, a new budget. And so anything we're not able to meet, say, you know, of the need, then that can roll over into the next budget. That's a fair...
Well, I, I know it's been a... So I, I, I believe that's what I stated earlier in this conversation, is that we, for me, that's where the market analysis come in. And I did state that once we have that, after, well, once we have, you know, a, a particular item option that we're choosing, and once we have that market analysis, that's exactly what it does. So I, I, I stated previously that if we start with an initial amount, and then later on, twenty twenty-seven, if we do our budget again next fiscal year, then that's where we can see that's what's left over, what's needed for... And in this case, I'm still speaking to the food pantry. But I, I believe that's what was stated, is that we, that's what we're, that's what the market analysis...
So there's a, a, a motion on the floor from trustee Thomas, that the administration would conduct a need analysis on the three recommendations that have been presented to the board. Is that correct?
And find out what the students need.
And find out what the students need. And I know there's a... But I know. So with that, is there a second?
Are you asking a second on her?
On her, no, her motion.
Second, she had a second, which was trustee Garcia.
Okay. So thank you for being patient. It has been moved by trustee Thomas, second by trustee Garcia, that the administration would conduct a need analysis, three recommendations presented to the board, and, and bring that back with regards to student need. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair? Because she's making a motion for the amendment, that needs to be voted on. If she needs a second, I don't know if there was a second for that. If there's not, you go ahead and vote. I mean, so I don't know if you're asking, if the vote was asking for... If I can report on the amendment. Yes, ma'am, who amends?
Yes, then I would like the second on the motion to amend to have guidance from the finance office around what is the proper amount for us to fund before the fiscal year end. Is there a second? Hearing that there's not a second, then what?
Vote, we vote on the main motion. Everyone's ready.
All right, is everyone ready? Vote on the main motion before we do any further discussion on the motion, main. Okay. Ms. Duncan, would you take the role?
Hope LaVell. Yes. Ashana Thomas. Noel Garcia.
Yes.
Chadon Taylor.
No.
Terrence Fraser.
Yes.
Angela Matthews.
Abstain.
Robert Proctor.
Hi.
Motion carrying.
Chair Matthews, if I could, now, now that there's been a, a, um, a motion and a board vote, I do want to speak to this, uh, issue of doing a, uh, needs assessment or market analysis about all three. That's something we can do. Um, and so the, a couple of things I wanted to point out. Uh, colleagues, uh, in anticipation of answering questions for all three of these, um, options, have working papers where they've started to prepare for answering your questions. So that's the first stop step in creating, I think, what you, you've asked for. The key will be the timing. And so I don't know that I can answer, sitting here right now, exactly how long that will take. I'll have to confer with, uh, colleagues. I do know the work has started. Um, and I do know that it's possible because I, I know it, it came out in this discussion. All three of these options are existing priorities of the college. The leaders who work on these areas are doing this every day with textbooks, with laptops, with food pantry. Um, so we can certainly do this, this option and get a, a, what, what I heard, the words, and, and, and Benita can give me the exactly, the exact ones about a detailed market analysis about what the students need, deeper information than what's in the report that, uh, we brought to you this evening. Uh, so I know we, the answer is certainly we can do that. The question will be timing and how long, uh, it will take. And I don't know that I can answer that tonight, but we can get right back with the board. I know one layer of detail is already emerging in the notebooks of my good colleagues.
Dr. Robinson is a need analysis and a market analysis. If the vote was more a needs analysis, it's just.
But I'm glad you clarified, um, we would go with the, what, what we, with the perception of the student needs are. And what I can say is, um, and my really smart colleagues can get very detailed about this. There's, there's, there's direct needs that we can quantify from LCC students, but one of the great things we have on a couple of these is some, uh, state and national data, particularly on the food pantry, for example, uh, there are other studies that we've heard at ACCT. My Leap just completed a, a task force analysis across the state of unmet, uh, student needs. So, um, I just, I know we can do this and I know we can get you the level of information you'd be looking for. What I don't know is tonight, the timing about quickly, but we can, we can get back to you really quickly about how long it might take. Because, but as you, as you saw from getting your questions answered, there's some really smart and very committed people who do these three. So I can get back, I can get back to the board, you know, send an email or something about how long we think it would, it would take.
Thank you, everyone, um, for your patience and for allowing this robust discussion. As regards to this idea, we're going to move on to the monthly, monthly monitoring report.
Thank you, Chair Matthews. Uh, in, in your packet trustees is the 2026, 2027 federal agenda. You're familiar with this, uh, uh, with this. We, we take it with us to NLS. Now, you'll recall that we don't, this is not an action item, uh, but it's the, the collateral that we take with us when we meet with our lawmakers at a, uh, ACCT National Legislative Summit. And that's the first thing in your monitoring report. The second thing in the monitoring report is the annual ends report. Uh, I briefly talked about this in my, um, in my oral president's report. It's 80 pages. It contains some good news. It has been refined over the years to be more usable for trustees. Uh, Dr. Welch and colleagues, uh, spent a good chunk of the year putting this together. Um, so that's, that's monthly monitoring report.
Madam Chair, but my, Mr. President, as I review that report, I know that some of the statements with regards to the end statements are inaccurate.
Third question?
I guess it wasn't a question, it's an observation. I would have expected that, okay, there'll be a review later to correct the statements of the end statements. It may not affect the analysis at all, but the statement as to what the ends were, it's not accurate.
Well, that, if I could, Chair Matthews, that is true of the copy you have in your packet, trustees. The copies you have at your place have those essentially typographical area errors corrected. You'll recall, and I was one of the authors of the revision of those end statements. Uh, E101 was significantly reduced to be more specific. Um, and essentially what you have, and there's one other change in there, you're correct. What was in the, uh, board packet was the old statements. But I also believe you're correct, uh, trustee Proctor, that, that, that didn't impact the content or the data. And you do have a, a corrected copy where the, uh, the newly revised end statements are in the, the version of the report that's on your desk. But it's true, the, the, the prior to revision versions of the end statements were in the first version that you received. Thank you for pointing that out.
They didn't receive it at the desk. Trustee Lavelle has a question.
I do have a que, I have a question on the, um, monthly financials. He's done the ends report?
Sure. I think that's where we're going, uh, no, that's C.
Okay.
And, and Don, and I would like to recognize Don before we get there, so. If it's all right, Chair Matthews, if there are any other questions about the ends report, uh, apart from just recognizing our colleagues in CDS, uh, for putting it together. Other, other questions or comments about the ends report? Then if we could, we'd go to monthly financials, trustee Lavelle, uh, Don is still on. Don, uh, I would invite you to make some framing comments about the monthly financial statements, item C.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Uh, as, you know, as we are now, one third of the way through the, the fiscal year, um, things look, uh, look well. Enrollments are higher than, uh, we budgeted, we basically budgeted to be at the same level as it was a year ago. However, now we're at a level in the fall of a little over eight percent higher than that. And at this point in time, enrollment for spring, although it's a little too soon to, uh, try to pin it down, is looking quite favorable. Uh, if you look at the, uh, on exhibit A, uh, which is line three, tuition and fees, uh, net of, uh, uncollectible. You know, we are five, five points ahead of where we were at a comparable point in time a year ago. And that's an obvious, uh, very, uh, very good sign. And again, as I mentioned in the previous discussion, uh, with the enrollment increases, our, our marginal revenue was higher than our marginal expenses. And then so that's obviously a very favorable, uh, position for the college to, to be in.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much, Don, for that. Um, I noticed on page 71, our cash and cash equivalents, that we took $5 million and moved it into the long-term investments. And I was just hoping you could just speak into that for us.
Uh, sure. Actually, uh, we made that move, uh, towards the end of last fiscal year. Uh, and that was prior to, uh, the Federal Reserve System making adjustments to, uh, their rates. And so we had locked in on a long-term basis, uh, funds at a more favorable rate than we would be getting right now. And in our cash flow projections that, you know, the $5 million, uh, you know, we projected that we would be able to do that on a long term without, uh, doing anything negative to our, uh, cash flow.
Thank you. That was like a good move.
And then lastly, Chair Matthews, in monthly monitoring reports, every month we put the, uh, monthly police department report. These are the, um, aggregated data collected by Chief Gaines and the Department on Citizen Contact. Uh, those are always there for public transparency, uh, and for the board's review. And the chief is here, uh, in the event that we needed to speak on those.
That's good, yeah.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions here to, you know, like, on contact number seven. Like you had. Maybe a prospective student trying to get into a locked building in light of, um, corporate initiated idea, yes. Can you tell us what you have about that?
Yeah.
Was he able to get into buildings and, or at least been able to?
I think the officer met him there, um, and talked to him about what the building was and. Didn't, didn't like any building.
Yeah. Um, and then for number 10 here, with like you had a, um, potential, I don't know if I'm reading this right, mental health crisis here for this individual that was leaning over the bridge.
Yeah.
But was during a blow up on air, which required treatment, uh, maybe for a, maybe two.
Yeah, we, we took care of that on scene. Um, don't want to give too much details about it, but yeah, it was, you know, for helping, to say a behavioral crisis, um, officers transferred to, um, seeing.
Thank you very much.
That's certain.
There's no questions for Chief Gaines.
I'm going to thank, thank the chief and thank all of you for, uh, participating in what I always celebrate as a model in, uh, public safety transparency.
Okay. All right, moving on, remember, uh, colleagues, that I did move the board comment up directly under the monthly monitoring reports. Are there any further board comments? Vice Chair Fraser.
Um, I want to just first, uh, thank LCC and all the celebrations. Um, the veteran celebration was really great the other day. Um, and just the way we celebrate our students, faculty and staff, I want to just continue to do it the, the star way. So just appreciate being out and about and seeing those activities. I think it's, means a lot to the community, the students and the staff. So continue doing the great work to the staff that put those activities on throughout the year.
Awesome. Jesse Dunn.
My comment is, I had it headed tonight, so if I was holding my head or crazy, that's why, so sorry.
So you guys see it?
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone for your patience with us tonight. We went back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. I'm not apologizing because, uh, I hope you saw a, an example of how, uh, dedicated this board is for the wellbeing of our students. And so, yeah, we might have gone back and forth a little bit too much, but it was in, in for a good purpose. And that's to take care of our students.
Any further comments, more comments? Okay. Um, moving on to chair's report, being real brief, I forgot to mention attendance to the MCCA Fall Board of Directive Meeting, September 25th to 26th, Kellogg Community Center in Battle Creek, Michigan. The topic, excuse me, topic of conversation was the State of Michigan Apprenticeship Program and our placement, meaning State of Michigan, in that area to which we are leading Michigan is in this program. But I'll bring that back with some definitive stats in December. I will echo Vice Chair Fraser with regards to congratulations to the inductees, um, of our LCC Digital Veterans Commemoration, um, in the HHS Building on Tuesday, I mean, November 11. Uh, Dean Cosgrove and his team, they always do a stellar celebration. And I thank every service person for your service to this country. Thank you so much. Uh, please see the board calendar of events, uh, colleagues, that was sent to you. Ms. Benita sent that, um, I do believe that next event is coming up, which is Silverbells. And we're going to have a watch party here and again in 5:30 to 8:00. Uh, let's see. And I think that's all that I have with regards to the chair's report. Moving on to committee reports, trustee Proctor.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I sent a memo to you with regard to the audit committee's activities last, and I don't think that was distributed in the board packet. I do have top of you the memo. It won't take long to read this and I should have tried to memorize it, but I would have lost my place anyway, but. Bear with me. The LCC Audit Committee met on Monday, November 3, 2025. The primary agenda item was the internal audit risk assessment results and proposed internal audit plan. That's a mouthful in and of itself. Conducted by Baker Tilly, the firm, the college is engaged to provide assessments of the college's operations other than financial audits to determine the degree to which college operations are exposed to risk and offer recommendations regarding the elimination or mitigation of such risk exposure. Baker Tilly presented a report on the recent multi-phase risk assessment involving participation by the leadership team to identify, assess and prioritize top risk and opportunities impacting the LCC's objectives. No member of the LCC Board of Trustees was involved in the assessment noted above. Ten risks were identified and prioritized by the leadership team and rated to build a preliminary risk response matrix. The risk assessments were summarized and evaluated. Baker Tilly provided recommendations for next steps regarding the top risk and proposed and internal audit plan. There was discussion about the distribution of Baker Tilly report. Um, this email was submitted to the chair of the board pursuant to the chair's request that committee chairs provide to the chair a report on the committee's activities and matters that may become part of a board meeting agenda. So this item was on the board meeting agenda, monthly about the audit committee, should it have met. And that's the report of the audit committee chair.
Any questions? I do have one.
Sure.
I think I heard you mention that with regards to the audit committee was not involved with.
No, I said trustees were not involved in this assessment.
Would this have been an assessment that would have? Or should the audit committee have been involved with? Maybe.
I can't answer that. All I can say is trustees were not involved. The administration knows more about the details of the operations of the college. So we have participated in, we being board members, not the entire board, periodically, the strategic plan development. That did not occur with the last strategic plan. However, the board did review it and approve it. So, and this review was about trying to assess what risks the college faces operation. People most involved in knowledge of that subject matter would be the employees of the college.
Chair Matthews, if I could, um, in, unless I'm misunderstanding you, trustee Proctor, there, there was structural involvement of this, from the trustees in our last strategic plan in a couple of key ways, including participation in a survey and a standalone session. Um, perhaps you're thinking of a previous strategic plan, but the, our most recent strategic planning process, uh, involved trustees in a couple of pretty substantive ways.
It may have. I don't remember that. I participated previously and, and not a forum of the board has been invited to participate. I know in the past, trustee, um, Abu, in one instance, trustee Meyer in another, were involved in some of the structure that led to the development of the plan. We sat around tables exchanging ideas with other staff.
I could, Chair, I, I think we had a session like that in this room with our, with, uh, if I, could I ask, uh, Dr. Samuel to, uh, we, we could dig up the dates, but I believe those sessions happened in this room.
Sure, we can provide a summary. So one of the first things that we did was we had what we call stakeholder interviews and representing the board as trustees, if I remember correctly, was Chair Matthews and new trustee Proctor and have private interviews with, um, the consultant that we work with. We also had a board workshop. We also had a board workshop in this room. It was a couple hours. It was mid-evening, we had food. And we also provided a survey to all of the board of trustee members for you to complete. And we invited trustee members to come to other things as they were available, but we did have specific session for trustees to have a conversation. And even when we had our review for HLC and we had a conversational strategic planning and the role of the board, we did have people sit in there to invite it for that. But certainly we can provide a summary just so that we can review everything if necessary.
I won't need the summary. I'm an old person. I can't remember everything I've been involved in. And I tried as you were making your statements, where would I have been sitting at something? And it wasn't up here.
Square. It wasn't like this. It was in a square. It was a board workshop.
You had, you had three pieces of pizza.
That may, what was in the pizza? That, that's the question. So I stand corrected, but I've raised that issue before saying. So now somebody said, if you want the date, the time and the place you set, we can give that to you. And whatever you may have said, we can repeat that back to you as well. So watch what you say, whether you're there or not. I stand corrected.
Ever comments?
I, I have, oh. Oh, same, same old, same old. I'll put it that way. The members of the policy committee are the sheriff, Anita Duncan, and trustee Taylor, and I, Chair. We have been meeting no less than twice a month for several months, and we're about through with the bylaw review. And we'll be submitting that in a large packet, but we'll take that in pieces. The next item, which we'll start with in December, is the governance policy. And everything we're doing is going to be comprehensive. If you thought you spent a lot of time tonight, wait till you get to these proposed changes to the bylaws and governance policy.
If I could, Chair Matthews, trustee Proctor and I spoke about this at the last meeting. Would there be an opportunity for, as in the past, members of the administration to be a part of those discussions, particularly when you leave the bylaws conversation and go to the college policies?
The college policy in that extent is always involved college personnel. So interesting dynamic. We don't really have a standing policy committee. It's been ad hoc. I've been chairing it since forever, it seems. But one of the proposals is to create a standing committee called Policy Committee with two components. One dealing with college policy, the personnel involved in that, if them, the, your lieutenants, as I call them, the two senior VPs and the chief financial officer. And occasionally, I think you may have stepped in on one of those. And then Ms. Duncan and me, and now trustee Taylor. The second component is dealing with what I call the board stuff, the bylaws and governance policy.
Okay. We're going to board member report, the foundation. Vice Chair Frazier?
Wonderful. So this is the most important thing about the foundation board. Scholarship applications for next year's academic year is open. So if you know students, it is time for them to apply to receive some resources. We're very excited about some gifts that we'll receive. Fifty thousand for the Osborne Scholarship for skilled trades. Ten thousand with pledge for STEM Fest for Laffy, Laff Q. And then Julie McQueen's two sons donated eleven thousand each to add to the endowment for the Adult Resource Center. And Plummer and Pip, Piptrick, Pipefitters 333 has donated to support the help portrait. So the foundation has been doing a great job out there raising funds and resources for our students and our community and our faculty and staff. So please let's give them a round of applause.
That's the foundation report.
Thank you. I'm Vice Chair Frazier. Next is unfinished business, seeing the hearing now. The next is new business, seeing. Next is closed session.
I move that the board enters into closed session for the purpose of discussing the president's yearly performance review as requested by him to be undertaken in a closed session and security planning to address existing threats or prevent, prevent potential threats to the safety of the students and staff. This is in accordance of section 8A and K of the Michigan OMA.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second. Been moved by trustee Frazier. Proctor, was it Proctor? Second by trustee Proctor for us to move it to a session for the aforementioned premises.
Point of order. Can people just be quiet? I know it's closed session, but I cannot hear. Sorry.
It has been moved by Vice Chair Frazier and seconded by trustee Proctor that we move into closed session for the aforementioned statement that he made. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Moving to closed session.
You gotta do a roll over in the closed session.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm trying to brush a little.
Chadam Taylor.
Aye.
Noah Garcia.
Aye.
Terrence Frazier.
Aye.
Robert Proctor.
Aye.
Angela Matthews. LaShonda Thomas. Hope LaBelle. Rajan Carey. Thank you.
Moving closed session. Can we be upstairs at least by 8:15?
Going up right now.
Robert Proctor.
Good.
Chad Taylor.
Here.
Shana Tompkins.
There motion to adjourn?
Yes, immediately. Vote for second.
Thank you has been moved by Frashion Frazier and second by Trustee LaBelle that this meeting is adjourned. Do we need to take a roll or we say all?
We can say all.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.